Call me in order, please. Stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Next will be the call order roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Aaron.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Almond.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions?
Just that swap out sheet for the event.
I'll make a motion to approve and just to just to admit if we had to put it on paper, it would be a scroll. So it's good that we have.
Got a motion to approve. You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate, approval of counsel being minutes of March. No, must be May.
Sorry.
Must be May twenty fifth. I think we approved.
I just referred that to Jenna.
I'll make a motion to approve, May twenty fifth.
The motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate, they'll take this financing budget. It becomes payable with the additional listing there. Any questions on that?
I was just gonna ask, what is card member service? Do you see this as like building supplies, S Y A A stuff?
Um, so the card member service is our forever credit cards. So S Y A A has their own banking for for the budget. Each and individual ones, so yes.
Well, if that's what it gets rid of, okay. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve. We got a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate. They'll take us to motions in general business. First item tonight under motions in general business is public hearing. Tax abatement. The city has been working with Marvin Development Three LLC regarding the proposed Taco Bell project and tax abatement. Marvin Development plans to construct a Taco Bell restaurant within the city of Sturgis, Illinois to be roughly twenty-nine hundred square feet in size. Located at one hundred Schuman Drive Northwest. Development site requires the creation of Minnesota Police Patrol M C compliant ponding to handle the drainage. The Dell Bell owners agreed to construct the pondings so that would benefit other parcels in the area as well. Due to these extra costs, the developers request a tax abatement assistance from the city. So the public hearing tonight will be able to take comment on the use of the property tax abatement and the aforementioned project cost pursuant to Minnesota statutes four nine, four six nine point one eight one two to four six nine point one eight one four, inclusive as amended. Total amount of the pay as you go tax abatement will not exceed seventy thousand collected over a period of ten years. So I'll close the regular meeting. All open the public hearing. Do you, did you receive any written or oral from any public?
Nope, we did not.
Who do we want to speak first?
We have our financial people here first and then the Taco Bell representatives are here if any questions come up.
So do we need to, do you guys wanna hear from these guys or what do you wanna do?
Well, I thought there was something about fifty thousand dollars of free tacos coming back. I'm guessing, I mean, I don't know how much, you probably should have the financial guy get up, but it's the same, same plan as we've had on all the others, so I'm comfortable.
But for the public.
For the record, you need it. For the public, for the record.
Yep. Then we need to introduce yourself again.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I, I just wanted to thank counsel because the last time, uh, we had a meeting, I had a conflict, City of Harmony. If you recall, I was on my phone trying to speak into the public hearing that night or whatever the business was, I can't recall. I, I have a meeting in Harmony again tonight and I told them, I said, I can't do it Stewartville again. So now they get the phone treatment tonight, so. Uh, and for the public's benefit, um, basically tax abatement law requires that certain findings be met. Um, certain public purposes are, um, are enjoyed as a result of providing the tax abatement assist, assistance in this case. Um, we're obviously increasing the tax base, having a new building that didn't exist before. Um, having a new business in town will provide employment opportunities. And the mayor's already mentioned that there's going to be not just the installation of a pond, but a, a drainage pond that's large enough to serve a greater area than just the parcel itself. Um, so in my mind, I describe this to staff as a textbook use of tax abatement because you have extraneous costs for a project. It just makes sense. Oh, project alone. The seventy thousand dollars is not a guaranteed payment. That's, that's over a period of ten years. It doesn't even represent all of the city's taxes. You're going to identify the new city taxes generated by the project and only ninety percent of those new taxes will be reimbursed over that ten year span. So if they build in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, you know, taxes don't go up this year, they don't, they don't go up next year, they'll go up two thousand and twenty-three. So we've set the payment dates on the contract to be February first the year following. So two thousand, February twenty-four will be your first payment. Up until February of two thousand and thirty-three would be your last payment for taxes in thirty-two. That'd be ten total collections. If for some reason taxes come in or are higher than what we expect and you hit that seventy thousand dollar figure prior to the ten years, deal's done. Okay? If we get to the ten years and we have not hit the seventy thousand dollars, too bad. City's not on the hook to come up with a shortfall, okay? So the developer's taking all the risk here. So a, a risk-free contract and the mayor already referred to it's called a pay as you go and these are the best kinds of contracts you can have. I guess that's all of my comments. I guess we should just see where questions take us.
Okay, so any questions?
Oh, I should make one more comment there for, for the benefit of the public. Um, you know, we did a tax abatement for Flats Fifty-Five. We're now approving an, an abatement here. At some point, unlike a Tiff district, which happens automatically behind the scenes, you have to actively budget for the abatement. You have to add it to your levy resolution. So when you first throw in these levy resolutions, so in Taco Bell's case, you would do this in, uh, summer of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, budgeting for two thousand and twenty-three collection. People might see a smaller increase in the levy. You know, councils are always concerned about what's the percentage increase in the levy. It's gonna skew things a little bit, but what we need to be able to explain to folks at that time is it's offset by the new tax base of this bill, uh, this business and so your tax rate will be unaffected as a result. So, you know, when that time comes, as that becomes an issue, we'll figure out the math and say the net increase in the levy is actually only X. This is sort of offset by, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Oh, that's great. And I think that pond itself is supposed to cause some, well, you would know, it's over two hundred thousand, right? So this is a small percentage back to that, really?
This would be a small percentage back to the work they're gonna be doing.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a great deal for us, in my opinion, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
There'll just be, um, if things go well after the public hearing, there'll be two actions required tonight. One is there's a resolution to authorize the tax abatement in general. And then, um, a simple motion and a vote, unless the attorneys provided a resolution for that, I don't think they did. Um, a simple motion and a vote to authorize signing the contract with Marvin Development.
Thanks. Do you have anything you'd like to say or add or?
Nothing on that, uh, when we get to the project, I can introduce myself.
All right. Were there any other comments or questions from the public or anybody else? Now I'm gonna close the public hearing. Back to the regular meeting. All right. First action will be to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine, a resolution approving property tax abatement related to the Taco Bell project twenty twenty-one.
I'll move on that.
You move on that. You got a motion. We've got a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate. The other one will be to sign the contract.
Enter contract agreement.
Sign it, enter into a contract agreement. We have a motion for conflict Marvin Development. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract agreement with Marvin Development.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, they all want a second. Anyone wants a box of tacos? Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. There, we got that out of the way. Next one. Taco Bell on Schuman Drive Northwest, conditional use permit to sign variance. Thanks for coming again.
Thank you.
City received an application from Marvin Development Three LLC for conditional use permit is for thirteen fifty point zero five B property drive through and a five foot variance from required twenty foot height allowance per section thirteen seventy-five point one four D signs. This will be for the proposed Taco Bell to be located at one hundred Schuman Drive Northeast. During site plan review, city engineer Orenoldy will review the details of the site plans outlined in thirteen ten point one three four, page thirteen twenty-nine. The planning commission is recommending approval of both the conditional use permit and the variance. So the council action request would be to approve or deny the conditional use permit and variance request. Do you wanna speak to this or do we wait for?
Sure. Yep, I can speak. Hello, my name is Zach Zelikson and I represent Marvin Development. Thank you so much for having me here, Mr. Mayor and council members. Any questions about the Taco Bell or anything you have, I'm here to answer them.
Great, you got any questions?
Fast, you want the tacos?
So potentially making bigger boxes. This, this is, I didn't, I've never really looked at a plan here where it kinda shows parking. So is it developed to be like a truck stop as well?
Yeah, so what we thought and as I was kinda coming down and observing the site and seeing the trucks, we wanted to have the ability for a truck to pull in and be able to turn. And what we noticed, if we didn't put that there, they're gonna drive on the grass anyways. So we just thought we'd, you know, that's kinda part of it, the ponding too, just we'll put the investment in and do it right the first time.
Sure.
So we, we think that trucks will use it after seeing how the, how the quick trip across the street is used.
The only other question I would add is just looking at, because it's not completely spelled out, well, probably is spelled out, but regarding the variances here, you're just, you're asking you get a higher sign, is that what that is? Is that what we need to change?
I, is that so?
Yeah, so that they line up with the, um, quick trip.
Yeah, we wanna be on par with that, yeah.
And what about the, it drives a five foot variance from that's, that's the height of mine.
Yeah, and it, we're not trying to put this eighty foot behemoth because you wouldn't, you drive by, you wouldn't even see it because it'd be too high. So it's more about keeping it in line with what's there.
Okay, sounds good.
And then the conditional use, it's part of our ordinance. Um, it's for any type of a business that has a drive-through. Um, Jenna will be reviewing the site plan and looking at traffic and how it's all gonna work. So your, your, um, motion to approve should be based on her.
Can we get them to put in a stoplight there if the state doesn't do it?
You got any other questions? Or Zach?
I think it's great.
Well, I guess the council action request is to approve or deny the conditional use permit and variance request. Where are we gonna go?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permits, permit and the variance.
You got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion to second, any other questions or discussion?
I do, oh no, none of that, all this has gone so. Maybe I'll do a quick timeframe on this again, like we've had, heard a few different things, but hopefully we'll get started.
In touch with our contractor, we're still planning, you know, I, I'm, I've kept the plans in motion. We felt confident talking with city staff. Um, we're planning to start right after Fourth of July. I am telling our entire office we'll be open right at Halloween, right before Halloween.
You really do it that quick, huh?
However, there has been, we've been noticing this year, just getting material, you know, I'm, I've pre-ordered lumber already for this project. I'm ready to go. Um, but you know, there's been a lot of surprises so far on material, just getting it, let alone price, so. So don't, don't come find me after Halloween. I'll do my best, I'll do my best.
I'm happy regardless.
Yeah, it will be open this year, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a welcome to Stewartville tattoo with a Taco Bell.
It's a lot of city support here, so fun, community, so.
Sorry, all for that. A little embarrassing.
We got a motion to second.
Twice he been laughing, come on.
All in favor, approve, will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate.
Seriously. Thanks, man.
I have a question for Zach Lee, it's just a question here. Our staff has been so pleased with all the work from Steve on down that they have given us. Any other questions? We've had several meetings either through the phone or in person. And everyone on your engineering crew, site development crew, real estate crew, and starting with Steve, have just been wonderful. Um, haven't really questioned any of our requirements other than how do we tackle them, how do we do them? And so from our standpoint, it's been a treat working with all of you.
Likewise.
Take that back to the rest of the troops.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
We appreciate it.
Thanks again, man. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
You gotta be there for the grand opening at Halloween, then.
I'll be there, I'll be coming down here a lot, so they all come over here. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna be dressed up in a big soft shell.
Another variance request, front yard. The city received an application from Mr. Loneyan to thirteen Seventh Avenue Southwest for a nine foot variance for required twenty-five foot front yard setback per section thirteen thirty point zero five, the all requirements. With approval, Loneyan will put a eighty, excuse me, eight by thirty addition on the front of his garage. Although we typically do not give front yard variances, the planning commission felt that due to the unique location of the garage and the curbing of the street, they are recommending approval of this variance. So the council action request would be to approve or deny the variance as submitted.
Who's on the planning, it's only Josh. You guys say no, no issues, I know. It's weird, like, I wanna tell Justin it's in your garage, big enough already, you know, but that would be kinda cool. So if I'm not mistaken, he's, so he's adding literally just coming out.
He's coming out to the front, because he, he said he can barely fit his, like a full-size truck in there.
Can he buy electric?
Aren't they gonna be the same size?
Well, if it's an F one fifty, true.
All right, the council action be, if you have any questions, to approve or deny the variance as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next, we have a lot split. Care Center, one oh nine Fourth Street Northeast. The city received an application from the Sturgis Care Center to split the lot at one oh nine Fourth Street Northeast. The purpose of the lot split is to be able to sell the house, retain the garage for storage. Both lots will be in compliance with requirements and zoning ordinance. The planning commission is recommending approval of this lot split. The survey is attached. Is that right?
Is that very in the back of the picture? See, all that lot goes way back.
That's the only, that's just, that's.
So I thought, so that's just like neutral.
Well, that all went back to different owners and stuffs.
It did. So this line though will actually go around, you know, the sink goes through the garage, I guess, but.
Well, it did, that garage is put right, that was. All right, questions or discussion? I'll make a motion to approve.
I just had a question, boy. What'd you guys come up with a P and Z, like, if they do split this? And what's gonna be the, we got that second lot's gonna be pretty useless with that, with just that garage and what's gonna happen fifteen years, twenty years?
They weren't sure yet, I think they were.
You don't have to get that, I mean, if that garage is in there, what's gonna happen?
Well, they could tear that down and then it, based on the size, they, they could.
I don't think that size is big enough for doing it.
Yeah.
Point two and eight. Cause the other one's point two two.
Yeah.
It's gonna be like this.
Yeah, it's still.
It's like the buildable lot.
You could, you'd have to build far back, probably further back because it's so narrow.
You're not gonna follow the white line, it's gonna split.
Go to that, go right here.
Go to the survey.
Go to the survey sheet.
Yeah, the survey sheet, yeah, that makes a big difference.
The other sheet is just showing what's there now, outlining the areas, the two parcels.
Both would be buildable lots.
Okay, if they're buildable, I'm, I'm just curious what P and Z wanted, what was gonna do with it if it's not buildable?
It fit the requirements for.
Okay.
I did make a motion to approve the eighty.
It's a square footage, yeah, and then they, okay, excuse me, so it's, it's, they will get a, need a variance on the front. Front eight, the thirty-nine.
It's gonna be like a cul-de-sac.
I was gonna say, my lots could feel like that too, but it's just that bad.
Right, it's, it's, right, just like a, a cul-de-sac. A little bit smaller, but at that time they will get a variance, and I had that conversation with Jane.
All right, do we have a motion to approve, but credit, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate. I'll take us to our next one, which is another lot split. Uh, one nineteen Second Avenue Northeast. The city received an application from the Sturgis Care Center to split the lot at one nineteen Second Avenue Northeast. The purpose of the lot split is to be able to sell the house and retain parcel B for green space to complement the care center. Planning commission is recommending approval of the lot split.
So what are they gonna do with this then, John? What is, the trails going?
They're just gonna keep it as green space. So they're not gonna do anything?
There's a trail easement, um, on the parcel, the front parcel.
So you go back to the survey deal, you know, right on that page, you show what's, what's gonna be.
Sorry, I just saw it right here.
We're gonna split off the house in the front, keep all the rest.
That hurts through the back, Karen.
How long has the care center owned these properties?
So the first one that you just did at one oh nine, um, they bought that house back when there was such a shortage of nurses and they couldn't get people. So they were bringing people up from like Illinois and Iowa and so they needed, they bought that house so they, they had the sleeping quarters. Um, with the intentions of knowing hopefully someday they'd sell it. They, the one you're considering now, they bought, oh, I don't know, a lot of years ago um, to use just as rental income to control that area. And now they're just are okay with selling it.
All right, the action to consider would be for the council to either approve or deny the lot split as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, you have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate.
So can you only do lot splits in the first two weeks of June? Is that all that works?
Once every ten years.
Next item, lot split, seven thirteen Highway sixty-three South. The city received an application from Alexis Concrete LLC to split the lot at seven thirteen Highway sixty-three South. The purpose of the lot split is to be able to sell the house and they have an option to sell the vacant lot. Both lots are in compliance with their zoning ordinance and will have access to sewer and water and driveway access. The planning commission is recommend, recommending approval of this lot split also. Questions or discussion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
If we have a motion to approve the lot split, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us to the feasibility study for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three C I P project. Resolution calling for the feasibility study of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three C I P. Per the current C I P schedule, we are requesting that feasibility study be ordered for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, twenty-three. I gotta get back into my.
Five twenties.
C I P, Fifth Avenue Southeast from First Street East. Highway thirty to third, one thirty-five. Sales of Ninth Street Southeast in the water main loop connection through the city home block connecting First Street East to Fourth Street Northeast. First step in the process to have a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three C I Ps to order feasibility study, which will provide the necessary information to design the project. Once the project is completed, it will be presented to city council for consideration of approval to move forward. Task is the city engineers quote, prepare the study.
Doesn't sound very fun, John.
You know, it's one of those necessary. We, we love studying your pipes and aids us. So we do.
No one's ever said that to me before.
I don't know whether there's a line in, in here, it's gotta get it done if you wanna do the job right.
This isn't, this is not a, not to exceed one, this is just an estimate.
It's an estimate, but yeah, we're won't be exceeding that at all, so.
Well, I'm gonna move to approve, cause I don't know how much party may be giving.
It, it is, a feasibility report is required for any project you want to assess, so.
On, on the payment, the fee hourly is estimated to be thirty-six comma and four zeros.
Oh. Yeah, I just.
It's thirty-six thousand, she's putting two hours of work in. Sorry, that's a long day.
We've got a motion to adopt resolution ordering preparation of feasibility study for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three C I P project. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Third study. Swimming pool heater. One of our thirteen-year-old swimming pool heaters is needing repair, it costs a five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Heaters have a life expectancy of ten years. It'd probably be better, according to staff, to replace this rather than repair it. We've got two calls for replacement of the alien heater, Matt Moore Heating and Cooling, eighteen thousand nine hundred. Valor Mechanical, seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-three. We will choose the Valor Mechanical bit, which is the lowest. Council action request would be to approve or deny the pool heater replacement for the lowest bidder Valor Mechanic. Any questions or discussion on this heater?
I didn't see anywhere near that Sean's asking for new equipment regarding today. We just didn't put my name, we left it on Carlos.
I'll make a motion to approve with new heater for the pool.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, advocate.
So do they offset each other, the heaters, cause you said the one will get you through for a while.
Especially with this warm weather. It's been working perfectly. You find just one, but if you get cooler temps, it's gonna drop now. The heaters in there are thirteen years old. They do, I mean, chlorine and heat very corrosive, obviously, and they, so to get that life out of them is probably good what we've done. So we just don't feel repairing them is probably worth putting six grand into something that isn't gonna last too much longer. Then we're gonna budget for that other one, probably will be following suit shortly after, so, you know, we'll ride it out, as long as we have one, we can ride it out as long as we can and still just replace that one when it goes, get the full life out of it.
Next item on general business is Summer Fest twenty twenty-one. Summer Fest twenty twenty-one is right around the corner, approval is needed for two items. One is temporary liquor license to sell beer on July third during the dance at Barrett Kitty Park. Two would be to close down the streets along the Port, Port Avro. Mapping attached. So the council action request would be to approve the temporary liquor license and to approve the street closure. So the council action request would be to approve the temporary liquor license and to approve the street closings. You want two?
One.
I assume that the liquor license is for two brothers, or?
No, it's a temporary license for the famer.
Oh, so that doesn't, they can...
So they can sell...
However, they want... Oh, okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, pool concessions. We've got price info and comparisons here to discuss.
Josh, you're in charge of the print. I didn't bring any orange slices up in there.
Follow up, this is a follow up for the last meeting for the Sturgis Pool concessions. For the public even, and for the council, costs from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one have mainly stayed the same with some very small increases. The only two concession prices that have changed a lot is popcorn and the slushes. Some of this pricing does not include the cost for labor or utilities, we're just covering food costs. Now, compared it to two other area pools, Taffy and St. Charles. And, but I can't ask Carl to discuss it compared to the school concession, but we're gonna try to get that done. I think we're probably less than them too, in most of their stuff.
Yeah, most of the stuff we're less than them on and, you know, based on the, based on some of our costs too, we really, I can give you an example, um, like Laffy Taffy.
One cent, right?
Yeah, we're making one cent on it. They're three for a dollar, or they're fifty cents each. Well, they're thirty-three cents a piece, so we're literally making a cent on them. You know, and some of those things, do we need to maybe look at adjusting a couple things? We might, but for the most part, we're not, we're at least breaking even on everything, we're not making a killing on it. We are not out of whack with anything, um, with any of the other people that I talked to. Um, yeah, and I, and I know based on my experience on high school concessions and all of that, we are, are a lot lower than where, where a lot of places are.
Well, I think we're trying to be more of a convenience and a profit maker.
Right, exactly, that's exactly what it is. It's a service to the community, it's nothing to make, it's not big, it's not like a big moneymaker. The pool is a service to the community, it's not considered a big moneymaker.
I can't remember, I was trying to tell Bill, it's been so long, when I was a kid, I don't remember if there was concessions there.
They knew they had candy.
They had those, they had those Strike swimsuits.
They, they, they had it with the Lucky Strikes, so guys.
Nobody wants to envision any of this. I can already see him running down the screen.
But the thing is, it used to be if you ate candy, you had to wait a half hour to go in the pool.
Couldn't go in right.
All kids have the candy in their hands, they're talking again.
I, I don't know if there's any more to add, I'd say we're...
That's good.
We've worked very crazy, I'd say.
Absolutely.
Anybody at the table have anything else they want? Alright, that was just a discussion item basically, so that was our all.
Thanks for putting that together, though, I'd like to see it.
It's good to know, check on that one sometime. Alright, we're done with general business, takes us to mayor's staff and salt reports. Mayor's report tonight, the city would send sympathies out to the families of Chuck Wheat, Mary Baker, Judy Warren, and Barbara Hatcher. And a day late, but happy birthday to our city engineer Jenna. Laura, did you wanna sing happy birthday or anything in your mouth, or?
Hey, get time, get time. You gotta get started.
Our company.
Three, two, one. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Jenna. Happy birthday to you.
It's official, the city of Stewartville has the most summer festival in town.
Ah, great, you can't deny it. Neighbor, county neighbors, yeah. Provide assistance with spring cleanup for older adults and persons with disabilities. If you need or know someone who could use the help, either cleaning or mowing, or just maybe cleaning out your garage or anything, make the call to two eight seven two zero one zero. The storm will be back, but for one day only this year on July seventeenth. Service to others in relational ministry. Sponsored by United Methodist Church, it'll come out to your home, do whatever you need. Garage cleaning, washing windows, replacing furnace filters, cleaning ceiling lights, about anything you can think of. Check out the Sturgis Star for more information on that. Don't forget to join the Sturgis Historical Society Facebook page, it's really been a lot of fun. There's a lot of fun history about our city, there's even some things I found out I thought I didn't know. I'd also like to send a congratulations to all the graduating seniors this year. They did a, they have a different kind of a year to go through, but they made it, and I'm glad they all did, and I hope they all go on to do some great things. So that's the mayor's report for the night, I'll take the city minister's report.
Our reports in your packet, I guess the biggest thing to highlight right at the end there, this community sure came out in a wonderful way with all these flags. And so kudos to the Stewartville Morning Lions that have gotten this thing going. Um, during the Memorial Day ceremonies at the cemetery, uh, one of the speakers was a rep from the Lions and said, they're getting close to five hundred flags that are participating, it seems like they're getting more and more requests, so kudos to this whole community.
Any questions for the minister? Alright, thank you, Bill. Finance director Carla.
Um, the pool is up and running and going, so they started with things, some things, we've had some hiccups with phones and all sorts of internet stuff, but I think we have them all straightened out and going. They've had great numbers so far, starting this week, and everything looks good, and we're rolling along and trying to learn to see what we might, some changes that we might wanna make or make things easier for the public as we, with, you know, the, with the pool director changing, so kind of just improve things as we go.
I've been there twice already, so again.
Any questions for finance director? Alright, thank you, Carla. Public works director Sean.
I have reports in there, everything's busy, but we'll move on. So if you have questions on anything that's in there, the tennis course got completed and my opinion looked great, we've had good response to it. Uh, the black copper.
What did that fly over, was that a drone that went through there, or is it just somebody walking on the field?
Yeah, entirely.
That was cool.
It was cool.
That was awesome.
So the, the people that, Rochester's saying they're building the asphalt, and they did an excellent job, there was no bird baskets in that entire thing. Uh, and then the guy that came in with the other stuff, it was, it looked nice and clean, no water puddles out there, so it turned out well.
I wasn't aware, SOIBA donated two baskets, huh?
Yeah, we had those three dollars up for the hoops, and then our guys just installed them, but it was just to get the materials for it.
Yeah, that's really cool. So like, get the bulbs ready and stuff.
Well, everything's a hundred percent ready to go, and it's kinda cool, they have a different venue out there that offers more things.
Yeah, see, no one's really been out there yet, it's been pretty hot this week.
They're...
No, this weekend they were at, sending tents and stuff, asking how to turn the tents cards lights on, so they were out there using them.
Really? Oh, that's so cool. Alright, thanks for getting all that done and keeping it on top, everyone. City engineers' report, Jenna, the door they go out.
Uh, one big thing for my report, um, and Bill mentioned it actually in his report also, but with our project, we will be getting into the intersection of Truck Highway thirty and Truck Highway sixty-three and First Street. Um, and we are proposing, or the contractors are actually proposing to do that work through the night. Um, we, we go against our, um, noise ordinance, however, we do feel it's best for all of the public that this occurs. Um, as traffic on sixty-three will be reduced to one lane in each direction, we'll be rerouting, um, seventy-five percent of the traffic for Truck Highway thirty with detour routes. And, um, just having that construction be at nighttime when there is less traffic, when they are digging almost fourteen feet deep right next to lane the traffic, um, it is safest for everyone for that to be an open hole at night. So that would, so far, be proposed to occur on the night of the twenty-first, which is before our next meeting, so wanted to get that one to you guys.
You think they do that in one night, as far as digging it up and giving it back?
The portion in the intersection, and then they'll get out and away from the traffic. Um, as far as how long it will be closed and reduced lanes, um, it'll, they're hoping to be able to do it within five working days and get it back open to traffic, but we all know how weather and unforeseen circumstances work. But we are, um, going to start it on the twenty-first in order to make sure that everything's back open before the Fourth of July weekend.
They gotta go put your clear to the center line?
Yes.
Yeah, I do think they...
They weren't, they're talking of working overnight and then all the next day to get that, or that, going home and keep the next thing going the whole time,
and then maybe taking the next day off to recover.
To rewire, but they do have to get to the manhole that's in the very center of that intersection, and at that point, they have to be fourteen feet down. So that's why it makes it a little trickier.
Sounds good to me, Zach.
Uh, the other thing, we did have our pre-construction meeting for Schumann's Rolling Ridge fourth today, and they do plan on starting to move dirt tomorrow. They will be hauling in equipment, um, for everyone in that neighborhood off of Luella. Um, we have required that the contractor actually build their own access road and enter in off of the roadway to the, or the driveway to the dog park. So there should not be an increase of construction traffic through that neighborhood.
Is that it? Any questions for the engineer? Thank you, Jenna. Labor director, the fire chief, that takes committee commissioner board reports, team of commerce, that's in your packet this evening, you're getting ready for Summer Fest. E H R A?
Next week.
Next week already? Finance?
Nothing.
Library?
Nothing.
Park four?
E H R A next week.
Personnel? Nothing, no. Planning zoning?
Uh, next month.
Public safety? Alright, ready?
Yeah, I know it's in the packet, but I don't know if you wanna highlight anything.
Yeah, we just finished the strategic plan, we're going to be having John Lee, our president, will be at the E H R A in July.
July. He doesn't wanna be in our parade or anything? He doesn't wanna be in our parade?
He could, you could ask him.
Maybe he will. Roll call.
Minutes in your packet was mainly some housekeeping in this last meeting, so.
And we didn't tell them about the rest of the council, no, but we did get that grant we were trying to fly.
Right, the two L R P applications, uh, what they say is you've come up short because other projects scored higher, they keep us in the upper just in case other allocations come in. But now we'll start working with Jenna's colleagues, um, probably mostly the mayor and I, um, to get in a bonding request where we'd work with the legislature on trying to get some funding, so.
Stu one eighty?
Come on, Dave.
Transit advisory committee?
Door and board.
I just wanna back up quick, when you get, when we get denied for that grant and they say these other thing, do you get it? I'm guessing they don't give you a list of anything that looks like it's in front of you, or do you get a chance at least to look at a whole list? You do have to see what kind of things they were?
I've got a copy on my desk, but it, it, the one we got doesn't totally summarize what they're doing in each of those projects, but it tells the location, the dollar amounts, and then if it was a city county township that got...
You like the state so pressing, I see that.
Well, they do, they do also, um, and they show it by mapping, they try to spread the money around the entire state, so they spread it out by mid-dots and districts.
The Rochester probably set up so much already, there's nothing left for us.
Rochester didn't get in either, so, um, but they do, and I think they might share some of their rankings, it might have been in order. Um, cause all of the ones that won were first, and then the, it, they followed. Um, but if the legislature does appoint any more money into that funding, which there was a lot of applications for it, and the last time this happened, that called for more money to go into the funds, Mid-Dot has already stated that there will not be another set of applications, it will just keep on going down the line, so.
Were we anywhere near the cutoff?
Um, fifteenth was...
Higher on the list.
Higher on the list than, than eleventh. Um, so there is a chance that fifteenth possibly could, um, depending on how much gets appointed, um, or if they appoint anything at all, but that is exactly how it went last time, a lot of things got applied for. It was, uh, the legislature looked at it as something positive and that there's a huge need out there, and then they put more money into the pot. Mid-Dot did not ask for any more applications, and it went to the people who already applied. So that was one of the points for needing to get those in right away.
Well, thanks for hearing all that, I think that's cool, and I don't need it, I guess, and we helped them, but nonetheless, I'm glad we're pushing forward with it. That would give me another route to get to Taco Bell, just so you guys know. Case of raids going on and I need a taco.
It would give a lot of people a nice route to Taco Bell, to be real.
Well, we, we did get a chance to talk to Commissioner Flynn and Chairman L P of the other two governing bodies, and they said they'll do what they can, uh, do a joint letter with the mayor to try to keep this ball rolling, so.
Alright, thanks a lot. Communications, nothing tonight. Open mic. Laura, anybody you wanna get to that mic? Everybody gotta read this or not?
No.
Alright.
She already used her open mic time singing.
Last motion. Motion to adjourn, so, motion to adjourn, do we got a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?